We interrupted Jim's piano lesson, apparently.
That's right.
No, I just think our mayor wanted a introduction, so.
I love it. Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Suzie, can you call roll, please?
Councilmember Canfield. Councilmember.
Here.
Member Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salasweedle.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeVor.
I'm here. For the consent agenda, I'd like to add item C under old business for the DNR conversion. And with that, with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the new consent agenda.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
I'll support.
Any other discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeVor.
Yes.
Councilmember Salasweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Citizen discussion for items not on the agenda. If you want to comment, you need to hit the raise your hand button, or if you're on the phone, you need to dial, Mike.
Star nine.
Star nine. Anybody?
I'm not seeing anything.
All business, item four, number A, COVID-19 issues, Mike.
Yeah, well, this has kind of changed quite a bit since this afternoon, since what I was planning to talk to you about. So it appears that today the governor came out and issued a new executive order. And a couple of things that pertains to us regarding this is, and I believe, I have to clarify this in the order. I looked at the order once today, but I still got some questions on it. It looks like we can next week open up park equipment, playground equipment. If, as long as I think we have to have signage saying that play or play at your own risk and use social distancing. I think that's the only requirement we have to have there. In regards to opening a city hall, the way I'm interpreting the order at this time is that we can open city hall next Monday. And as of right now, I'm planning on doing that. Staff will be, staff is back to work, and I think we're prepared to go. I do believe one of the requirements is that obviously use all social distancing as required, but the requirement of wearing masks in the city hall, I think that should probably something that we do enforce, so people are wearing their masks when they come in. Also, in regards to public meetings, well, that is still an issue. I guess you can decide what you want to do on this. But as of, under my interpretation of the executive order that I read only twice, it allows for gatherings of 10 inside the building, no more than gatherings of 10 in an indoor facility. Anything, anything outside, you can have up to 100. And so that's really, I mean, now, as I mentioned to you in my weekly memo this week, this has been an issue of debate amongst city managers, whether you can actually have a public meeting in council chambers at this point. I can tell you, some communities have done it, they're just doing it. Other communities, they're following the executive order. Our attorney, Jessica Wood, has stated that the current executive order, we cannot meet. It's, that would technically be a violation, but that is your call. And, but I'm just bringing those things to you. I know the businesses, I know that there's going to be a lot more relaxation of the businesses. We did send out applications to all five downtown restaurants to use the public space. I have not gotten them back yet, but I also sent them out mid to late last week. And I know in talking to a couple of them, they're not going to participate. There's going to be a couple that probably will, but I'll reach out to them again. So those are the things that we're dealing with right now with COVID. It was kind of nice today that there was some relaxation of this, and hopefully we can start getting back to some normalcy.
So for meetings, whatever, because I think people need to have access to us, and they don't.
Right.
But if Donker Slu and Dan show up, we have 10 just on the dais.
So. Right.
We can't limit who else comes in, it's illegal.
Yeah. Right.
So.
Then goes back to.
Yeah, but our next meetings, our next meeting's not till the 15th. And the rest of that order expires on the 12th, right?
Nope, they extended the order, I do not know the date. But they did extend it today, beyond the 12th. I just don't know the date.
I don't, anybody, I think we need to meet, I don't.
You know, an option you could do is maybe you could find an outdoor location to meet.
Why can't we meet on the deck behind the library?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could meet, you can meet in many different places. Obviously, the only issue will be the weather, but you could meet outside.
The historical museum has that garden, the library has the deck behind it.
Creekside?
They're based at the fairgrounds.
Or Creekside?
Creekside, yeah.
That's a pavilion, at least.
Plenty of time, plenty of time to figure it out, but I would like to see us meet in person.
Okay.
I agree.
Anybody else have any? Input?
What, no, if we can get back together and we can do it outside up to 100, then let's find us an outdoor area, we can do it.
Hey, Mike, I just checked online, and it looks like July 4th is the fifth phase of the ban.
My under, yeah, I believe that might be it.
The fifth phase is.
That's what I believe, I believe you're right.
Just that way.
She still will change it whenever she wants to change it, so it could, the whole thing could end tomorrow, really, and it could go till December, you don't know. She's going to do whatever she wants to do. All right, well, if everybody's at least in favor of starting the path back to meeting, Mike, you and I can work on that next week if city hall's back open.
Yeah, we can, we can figure that out.
Set locations and talk to whoever we need to talk to. I think the, with the weather permit, I think the historical museum would be a fantastic location. We've talked about holding meetings in there before, just to bring new people in there that maybe wouldn't go in there, so that's something for us to work on next week, Michael.
Okay, sounds good.
This week, it's Monday, I keep forgetting.
I would rather, yeah, let's try and work on it this week.
Yeah, let's start, we can start whenever, so, all right, we'll work on that. Let's move to item B, sidewalks, Mike.
Yeah, I attached a memo from March of 2018, which spelled out the institution of our sidewalk plan. City council wanted to see it as re-implemented in 2020 when we met with Lou Bender. As you know, there were some, there were some communication issues pertaining to the original plan. There was also concern by the previous public works director that we didn't have a mechanism of enforcement once we notified residents of deficiencies, which slowed down implementation. In addition, this was trying to be implemented at a time, there were other issues that became a higher priority to city administration where this couldn't be given its due attention. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, I have difficulty having our staff try to reinstitute this plan this year. I don't know if this is the time the city staff should try and institute this with the amount of our residents who may be enduring tremendous hardships. That said, maybe you want to consider tabling this matter until the beginning of 2021 and review it then. I know this is something the council wanted us to do, and, you know, I just don't, I just don't know how you feel about taking an aggressive stand at this point on that.
Okay, um, I think 2021 to table it is, so you table it till 2021, and then we get working. I'd like to have a plan in place when spring breaks, not have spring come and still be working on. How, I would like to see it table till fall of 2021. See where people are.
Fall of 2021, or fall of 2020?
No, 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 whatever, fall, sorry, fall of 2020. That'll give us all the winter months to come up with a plan that we can all agree on. And let all the residents be notified and work on enforcement policy. I just hate to get a late start and then run out of good sidewalk fixing months again, and then we're delayed another year. Then it's 2022, 2023. This is something we told people we were going to do, and we need to stick to doing the things we say we're going to do.
I agree.
September or October to at least start the planning stages.
Sure.
Then if people are in, maybe people are in better shape than they thought, and they just want to do it before winter comes, they should have the option. Because it's a huge issue, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to follow the same directive. So it'd be nice to know for city sidewalks. I have a hard time telling other people to do it if we're not going to have a plan to do it ourselves.
Right, so we have taken care of most of our sidewalk issues.
Maybe you're talking about another year of wear and tear and.
Fair enough, yep, yep.
So if everybody's good with it, I'd like to see it back again September or October.
Okay.
And you can never have enough time to plan for something that's going to be a pretty big deal.
Hey, is Dan on with us tonight?
He is, right here.
Dan, how long is it going to take you and your staff, once you come up with a plan, to then circulate all the way back around and check every sidewalk in the city like they did a couple years back?
Well, probably take, take a while. My thought was to get started on looking at the sidewalks this summer, make our list, so that we know where the bad spots are and the iffy spots, so we don't have to recirculate amongst everything and try to get as much of it done in the summer, so come fall when we start having this conversation, we know how much we're looking at.
How about Dan brings us a report in September of what needs to be addressed, and then we come up with the plan?
Is that working? I like it. We're going to have to figure out enforcement, too, and what we're going to do about houses when they get sold, and how we're going to track that. And I just think it's going to be a process, and I'd hate to see us run out of time and then have to tell people we're, you know, we're not doing it for another year. That's the last thing we need to be doing.
Right.
Well, at least we're leading by example in that we fix our sidewalks.
Everybody's good with that, then, middle of September for Dan, and then that'll give us all the time we need to get our house in order.
I'll see you in September.
Thank you, Dan. DNR, item C, DNR land something, Michael.
Yeah, I'm pulling this up right now, hang on one second.
Did everybody get the email from Mike with the pictures of the land conversion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is what, when we initially went to DNR back earlier this winter, we went with them with the 263 foot by seven foot that we've always talked about, and then the 50 foot by 10 foot in the, basically in the southwest corner of 219 High. At the time, they were not, they did not accept that, they did not accept that conversion. So during our discussions with them, they were talking with us about, there were a couple of options. The one option was, we could just try and find property in the Riverwalk and encumber that, and add that to the encumbrance, and/or we could use a portion of 238 High Street that we purchased as the use. The concern with 238 High Street is, is if you encumber a portion of that property, you run a couple of risks. One of the issues is you might actually have a property that has actually then become a non-conforming use. The other issue you have is whatever you, whatever you might want to do with that property in the future, it does, it does restrict it by encumbering it. So the thought process was, rather than doing that, just take a portion of the Riverwalk that's already park property to begin with and encumber it. So what we did was we drafted, we cut out in your, on the screen, we cut out about, it's about a 5,500 square foot piece. And I did present this idea to DNR, and they were fine with it. I haven't done, I'm ready to have a survey done and a legal description done on that, and then we can start that process with DNR, but I wanted to bring it to you first before I did that. Like I said, it's already property we've encumbered, it's park property, we've already, it probably should have been encumbered prior. But this is what we, this is what I've been able to come up with with DNR.
Hi, anybody? I have a question.
Sure.
I was contacted two different ways. In my mind, this was guaranteeing that park property could never be anything but park property, and I saw it as a good thing. I heard from two different people, one via email, one when I was walking around town. Their perception is that we are giving up more, and the developers are not giving anything into the pot. And maybe I'm just not explaining it. Can you, can you give me a better way to explain it to them? Because I was like, this is how I explained it, that this guarantees that more of the park can never be anything but a park. And in my mind, that's a good thing.
That's about the best way to explain it, I think.
Okay, can I, what I've been, what I've been telling people is, and this is how I understand it, if I'm wrong, I might be wrong. It's already parkland. We're adding it to the parkland under the DNR grant, which only protects it more.
More, correct.
I've been selling it as a second layer of protection.
Right, correct.
Because it's already parkland, which is fine, but the DNR grant parkland is untouchable in perpetuity.
Correct.
That's how I've been selling it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Speaking of that project, anybody know why nothing's happened since the construction ban was lifted? Are they waiting for this to get all cleared up?
No, there were some, there were some miscommunications pertaining to the permit. They hadn't, they didn't have, they didn't have the permit issued, and it was, it was, I found out about this on Friday, that this was being held up by us because of the, there was, because they were going to make some changes to their planned unit development. So once I realized the issue, I, I've corrected it since then. So we are issuing building permits on the areas that they've been approved already to do. And the areas that they're coming back to the planning commission, the city council for the PUD, those areas we cannot issue permits on, but it allows them to get work going.
Greg, did you have your hand up? I can't see the grid view of who's in the meeting, so I'm sorry.
I also have heard some questions. Originally, we were going to get more property from the developers, and they dwindled that down. We agreed to that pending DEQ approval. It looks to me like we are making up, and they are contributing nothing. We're giving them roughly 1,840 square feet, 500 square feet. And my thought was that if the DEQ didn't agree, that they would come up with the additional property to make it work. And those are the comments I'm hearing publicly.
It's not a change in property amount, though. It's the original thing we agreed to. It's just changing which park property the DNR grant encumbers. I don't, we're not giving up more than we gave up when we originally agreed. This is the agreement, and I understand it was contingent on DNR approval, but the DNR approval is really just protecting more parkland than we did before. But I think it's a good thing. I'd love to see all that Riverwalk area protected long after any of us are on council.
Well, the seven feet was protected, it took it out, so it really doesn't protect it, it just makes it more difficult. But I just, DEQ is saying it's not fair swap, and we're making it work.
What was the reason the DNR or DEQ said it wasn't fair?
Basically, for the same reason that Greg stated.
That the city's giving.
The city was giving up more property than what they were getting. However, by us encumbering the additional property that we own, saying that that's going to be park property in perpetuity, that's what'll satisfy them going forward with the land conversion.
Okay.
It'll satisfy the DNR, but not necessarily some of the citizens of Lowell.
Exactly.
Correct, that is possible.
And there were no other offers from the developer about giving up any other land, I'm assuming?
I'm not aware of any.
Did we?
No.
I mean, I wasn't involved in these negotiations, so.
The negotiations have nothing to do with the DNR thing that we're talking about now. This was a meeting between all of us with the DNR, saying what needed to be done to satisfy them. And if it would have been an issue of where more land needed to be given up one way or the other, we could have renegotiated. But this is a fix for, and it doesn't change any terms of the original deal, except for the title of what the land actually is. It's parkland still, just like it was, and now it's DNR encumbered parkland. I don't, I don't, I understand how people are looking at it, but it's not on the surface what it seems. And then toss away a whole deal that we worked years to get and stayed out of court, so that we can title land differently? I don't, I don't understand.
Well, I think it should have at least been a discussion, that I think there was flexibility initially that they were going to give us more property. But now that we've found another solution without asking, there's any going back, we've created our own problem.
Yeah, and on the zoomed up picture of this, Mike, where is the trade property? It's where that little car is parked, right?
The trade.
It's like 50 feet by.
Yeah, not where, I think the car might be a little too far. I don't, it's not, this isn't to scale, so, but it's in that area.
Well, Greg, I just heard, is Perry there? Because I just heard him.
Yes.
Okay, I think he, it was 50 by.
10.
10.
Originally, it was Argie, though. What was the original?
So are we?
The, the original was.
So, hold on, hold on, hold on. Are we taking public comment without that person being recognized for this agenda item? Is that what's happening right now?
Never mind.
We have someone off camera giving a council member input on an agenda item without being recognized?
He was answering a question about things, but like I said, we've made our mess, just move on.
For yours, I tried to get on Zoom, and I could not get on Zoom.
Well, I would, I would have recognized you, Perry, to make a comment. I would have, I don't have a problem with your input. I appreciate your input, because nobody knows parks better than you. I just don't like behind the camera feedback where the public can't see what we're talking about. Does anybody else have anything on this agenda item?
No, I'm good with it. I just wish we would have had it in green, the new section here, so it would have been, this is all the new what's going in, so.
All right, Mike, do you need a motion to change this?
No, I just need, I can just continue moving forward if you want. I, like I said, I didn't move forward on this until I brought it to you.
Does anybody have a problem? I mean, all right, let's just make a motion then to reencumber the DNR land.
To do what, Mike?
Just to retitle the, to reencumber the parkland into DNR park property.
Yeah, I'll make that.
I'll support it. Any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeVor.
Yes.
Councilmember Salasweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
In the interest of moving forward, yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
All right, new business, item A, Lowell Garden Sale Parking Lot Closure, Mike? Mike, can you put it back in the grid view?
Yeah, no problem, yep, no problem, yep, no problem.
Thank you.
There we go. Tanya North, owner of North Star Antiques, has submitted a request to close off a portion of the parking lot within the 200 block of West Main Street. The event would run from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, June 13th, 2020. They hope to promote this as the first annual Lowell Garden Sale. Attach our drawings that show the layout. First drawing shows the layout from the May 29th, 2020 event, which was a four-hour event that I approved administratively. And the second drawing is the tentative layout for the June 13th, 2020 event if approved. North has indicated they are open to any suggestions or concerns, and she's on, I will unmute her.
Aren't we talking about blocking the street off, not a parking spot, parking spots? Or does that include the parking spots? That's why it says parking spots?
Hang on, let's get Tanya.
Yeah, Tanya, Tanya can speak on that.
They'll get after it.
It looks like it's the same thing they do for the.
You need to unmute yourself, Tanya, Tanya, I'm sorry. There you go.
There we go.
So, so, yeah, the area for the, the next one, we were thinking it would be a better idea to move it between Larkins and the Arts Council, so the area typically where the chili cook-off is, because there's already precedent for that, with less of our parking behind the building, and leave the movement around in the parking lot would still be there. So a portion of that would be, the road would be blocked, yes.
Thanks.
Mayor, I have somebody who's willing, who wants to speak, I will unmute them. Eric, go ahead. I'm asking you to unmute, so you can unmute yourself.
We're, we're not clear if the parking lot is going to be used, or if it's just the road in front of the post office.
It would be a portion of the road in front of the post office. I'm trying to use the area over by Larkins. And I'm trying to use the area over by Larkins and not our parking lot behind us, Eric.
Great, we love the idea of what you're trying to do, and we look forward to more of that. But the location that you had this previous time deterred some people from coming to our business. And especially now that we're going to open up the store, we, we want all, we want access to our store as free as possible. So, on the, the road for the post office, that's fine with us, but not in back of our building.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
I think it's better to, the chili cook-off, that location, that whole stretch of strip. Go ahead, Marty.
Okay, so, Mike Larkins, I ran into him today. Mike is not in favor of this. They're getting ready to reopen the restaurant for curbside pickup only. The time that Tanya wants to do this, and I agree, it was a good idea. Nobody could get to that side door of Larkins to pick up their takeout, so that puts Mike behind. And that, that really does interfere with Mike Larkins and the restaurant, and trying to get our main street open back up. I'm going to suggest, instead of doing it there, maybe, Tanya, you look at the parking lot across the street over there by King Milling and utilize that. You've got lots of parking that can be used. You're not in, it's not encumbering any of the local businesses, and you'll have more space.
Marty?
Yeah.
What about the part of that road in front of Light and Power? Is that far enough back that people can drive through your parking lot and still access Mike's building?
Well, you got the post open, so people, people won't be able to get there, and then you got one way. Yeah, I agree. I'm just telling you about Mike and Deb. They both, they both had concerns over it, and I'm just passing them along.
No, absolutely.
On Zoom, but.
What if we-
Is the post office, hang on, Liz, does the post office close early on Saturdays? I don't know what their hours are on Saturday.
Noon.
Noon?
Thank you.
Liz?
Go ahead. Um, what about the, the parking spaces that Lowell Light and Power just freed up, you know, by removing part of their, guys help me out here, they, the outside stuff?
Yeah, where the shed used to be, the extension of the building they just took down.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's-
What about that area?
Well, that's only like twenty-five by twenty-five. That's nowhere near the size Tanya's talking about. I think if you use that parking lot over by King Milling, problem solved. You got lots and lots of room over there. You got good visibility, you got good traffic flow, because you've got sidewalk accessibility. People can always park at the fairgrounds and walk up. It just, it, to me, that just solves a lot of issues, and it, yeah, it's right up to Main Street. It's not going to be hid between two buildings, and you're only going to see it for a split second. It's going to be wide open and visible.
I think you're going to have a lot of businesses mad, no matter where you put it, frankly, but just too bad, because it really was a great event this last weekend. It brought a lot of people in, and some well-deserved money for some businesses.
It is a great, go ahead, sorry, Cliff, go ahead. No, go.
I gotta raise my hand. How do you feel about having, I mean, I, when I looked at this this afternoon, I thought, cool. Anything that will help, but I didn't think about Larkins.
And a lot of that, a lot of that changed today. I was actually trying to see if we could get Mike involved in it, where it would actually help his business. I had a phone call out to him and did not get a return call from him in time for the meeting. But yeah, I actually was thinking maybe he would, he would put it up in the tent, and that would be part of it, rather than, but obviously, without having that information from him, I, obviously, that's not maybe something he's interested in doing. But another thought is, I'm curious to know how Eric and Burl feel about going to a Sunday, because they're normally closed on Sundays. You know, we've batted that idea around. Saturdays are usually a little busier day. And if you make it a Monday, you know, I don't know how that will, but I'm certainly interested in maybe pursuing that to a Sunday instead of a Saturday, to try to accommodate everybody. The reason we, one of the other reasons we liked going to Larkins was the visibility, which the parking lot across the street does do. There are a few challenges there, because my dealers liked being able to come out of our store. And this would put them crossing the street if they had to come over to the store for something. You know, we, we're trying to keep some music to it, which we connected it to our Wi-Fi, and that, that actually went over really well. Had a young person here to help with the speakers, so that helped. We put some speakers out and played some vintage music, and it was just, honestly, it was just a, like, really liked. I think they needed it. So, we were trying to do that again. Like to know if Burl and Eric have any comment about a Sunday?
Well, I was approached by other people that were over there. Nick that lives upstairs and some other people, but they just said that, you know, they, they just weren't happy with it, but that's their thing, and that's what they're going to pass along. I thought they were going to come see you.
Oh, wow, gosh.
Liz?
I don't know, I just have to say this. You know, we've done Riverwalk for how many years? We take the parking lot pretty much, you know, in our neck of the woods, and everybody complained, you know, that we take all that, and boy, we sure would like to have something on the west side of the river. And all of a sudden, somebody's trying to do something, and now everybody's kind of poo-pooing the idea. You know, everybody in this community has to give and take. These merchants, you know, need this boost this year, and we're going to have to probably do a lot more outdoor events. So, you know, city council itself wanted to open up space for restaurants. I don't know, I mean, I just feel like it's got to be a give and take. That's all there is to it. Get through this summer, and then we can go back to normal maybe next year.
Thank you, Liz, I think that's a really good point. My, um, my dealers were pretty excited about the idea of maybe being able to do this maybe once a month, because we've got to make up for things that aren't, aren't going to happen. We've now already lost the equivalent of girls' night out with the Spring Fling, we've lost. Now, the summer concerts are going away. I don't know, I can't say exactly what kind of impact that will have on our business with the summer concerts, because that is on the other side. But I will say, I, I stayed open on those Thursday nights, and we definitely had people in our store. But I know I was unique in that, I think there was a lot of us that opened up on this end. But that said, we've got that Riverwalk that we're probably going to lose, we're going to lose who knows how many others. Christmas through Lowell is a big question mark, which we do in three days, what we do in a month, in those three days. So, I'm looking right now to be ahead of the game, to say, let's have smaller events if we can. And my store's not very big, so the, the joy of it now is, if, if we've got the ability to go outside with something and keep the social distancing, and still bring people into, to everybody around here, and especially if the restaurants are open, I think we're going to need it, whether it's me or some other business. I think we're going to need some small things, and I don't think, I don't know, I guess, if the chamber's going to be able to promote these things if they're encouraging larger numbers to come, you know? I didn't do a lot of promotions for this. I did some Facebook advertising, I did ten signs around Lowell. We figured we had about a hundred people a day in those two days, but it was big for us.
Eric?
What about, um, if it's on Riverside, uh, it's, you're talking about a Saturday, correct?
Yes.
So, so, the Lowell Light and Power employees are not parked there on Saturday. You have all that area of parking that you could divide. You could also go across the street. We haven't, I know that there's bids, or a bid, but haven't sold that, the building yet. You could, uh, we could open the doors for that, and you could actually have a little bit of covered space. And you could also have booths in front of that, and still have a traffic lane between them. So, that's just, that's just trying to figure out a way to, to do something. Thank you.
Is- Is, Mike's open on Sundays, right, Marty?
Mike.
Larkin?
Yes.
Tony, what time are you planning on starting this if it was a Saturday?
We were hoping to do a little longer day, like a ten to five or a ten to four. Ten to five is what I initially put down, but my dealers get tired by four, so, and it can slip, lane off, so.
Because if it's a Saturday, that post office property is perfect, as long as it's afternoon. Nobody's going to be at the post office afternoon. And if it's Sunday, it's wide open, because they're not open on Sundays. And then people can still get to Mike. I'd really like to see Larkins incorporated into this, because they can use the business just as much as anybody else.
That's, that was one of the reasons I chose it.
I know, I know you're trying, but that, and then, like Perry said, that Riverside side is perfect, too. It's on, that perfect horseshoe at the peak of the Light and Power building, too.
I love that idea, because it's right at the river, there's grass on the side, there's, I, I, covered is important. One of the reasons I wanted to be able to do the overnight is we do have a bigger tent, that, that kind of a bigger tent requires a little more manpower. You know, we're mostly a bunch of women trying to do this kind of thing, so it'd be helpful if we can get it set up like the night before, and then have it, and then tear it down that, so.
And I think, and I think Larkins could do curbside out of the back patio, in between the theater and the restaurant. The only concern would be those people can't park on Main Street, so they'd still need that strip of parking lot. But if we cut it to the north of the, that Light and Power parking lot corner, Marty, where you usually park.
Yeah, right by the post office button.
And north, she could have that whole horseshoe on the Broadway side and the Riverside side. The Light and Power and the post office are going to be non-issues, because neither one will be open. And then Mike will still be able to get his cars in and out for his curbside, or if they're coming in to sit down, because they'll be doing that again by then. I think with that scenario, with what Perry suggested, in the post office side, as long as we're not affecting post office businesses, really the perfect solution.
So, I just want to point out that, that if doing noon to, noon to five, because the post office doesn't close till noon, doing is a little more challenging, because now you're talking about trying to set up a little bit more for a short, you know, four or five hours at a, at a time, and it would be ideal if we're going to, we're going to try to do it a little bit bigger, to have that morning setup time and, and so forth. I, I, I don't think we need both sides. We don't necessarily need the horseshoe for this particular event, because I don't know that in the short amount of time, and we're talking twelve days, I'm going to get that many more people to, to jump on board, but I'm certainly going to try.
Yeah, but the, the side, Riverside side would work out ideally for you.
Yes, I agree.
That would eliminate, the post office will be there, the parking lot could be the cross-through for all that back traffic. Yeah, that, that makes a lot, I mean, that works great.
And they can still get to, if she's on the Riverside side, they can still get to Mike's and the post office going up through either Elm or whatever, and then coming back down off of Hudson, instead of-
It probably won't have Wi-Fi that far over, which will be a little disadvantage from the music side, unless we can solve, unless somebody has an idea for that.
If you did a phone hotspot, you would just need the phone to connect, you connect the Wi-Fi to it. I mean, I don't know, I don't, I barely know how to turn this on to come to the scene.
You can get music on your phone all over town. I'm the guy with headphones that walks the music all over town.
Yeah, I know.
All over town, not a problem.
I don't have unlimited, I don't have unlimited service, so you're talking-
Neither do I.
Cliff has offered his IT skills for your event. Also, if you really want to see something great, put a trampoline out at this event, it would be fantastic. All right, what do we want to do here? Change it to the Riverside side?
Yeah, if that works for you, Tanya, I think that-
We can make that work, we can make that work. Just, just a big question here, would you guys be opposed to a Saturday, Sunday? If, um, that'd be the thirteenth and the fourteenth, if we did it over there?
If you're bringing people to downtown, I would rather it be at Saturday, Sunday. We need to get as many people back downtown legally, since this is the internet.
Okay.
We need the exposure.
But here's what we did. We said as a group, city council, that all groups that were going to do things like this had to submit a plan to how they were going to do it. It was for the fairgrounds, but I think this translated into it, too. So, you know, Tanya, I, I don't know if you know about that, but it was basically, how are you going to do it? How are you going to control your, how many people come in, and stuff like that? We submitted, we said we were going to do it for the fairgrounds, I think. This is a neat do, I think we should do it for this event, too, just so everybody's on, everybody knows exactly what's going to happen straight on down the list. And it was all what, CDC guidelines and the, on the health department, right?
Correct.
Yep, so.
It's more difficult because of the frequency in which they change those guidelines, and tell you what you can and can't do, and she's going to make a plan.
Come with a consultant? So that I can fill out the plan?
Yep, we'll give you Cliff for that, too. He may send you a bill, though, I can't control how that goes.
Tony, if you reach out to me, I'll work with you.
Yeah, there you go. Mike won't send us a bill. I want this to happen, but I want Mike Larkin to have as many people getting food from him as they can.
Yeah.
We all need, we can't be taking a single customer from a single business downtown forever, ever again. We need it, but we need events like yours to bring people in who maybe wouldn't have came before, so.
Uh, Mayor?
Yeah.
Uh, we have somebody who'd like to speak again. Go ahead, Eric.
Uh, yes, I think this sounds like a great-
I'm sorry, Eric, can we just do your name and your address, please, like a normal public comment? Because I can't see you on my screen.
Sure, Derek Bartkus, proud to live at two fifteen and a half West Main. I just want to make sure, if you don't close Riverside Drive, that the traffic and going between this, this setup is not going to be a safety hazard. Some cars, some cars drive fast on Riverside Drive, and if they're going from the parking, the parking side over to the vacant building and back, just, we just need to be careful about pedestrian safety.
Could we, could we put those little green men that we put on Main Street?
That hold the stick?
Well, you know, the, the pylons that we put for Riverwalk, can we put those there? So, people making a right turn will instinctively slow down?
Sure, we can put those up.
Thank you.
And I think they use that, from what I've seen, at least when I'm out walking, they use that little stretch starting right at Springer's Place to get going, so they can fly down. If we're slowing them down right there, I, you know, I think we're going to be all right. And, you know, I, I don't know, yeah.
Uh, my comment is the fact that I know they would think about trying this monthly, but what I like to do is, once this first one is over, get back some feedback, what worked, what didn't work, where improvements need to be, grabbing, all of that, before we go ahead and think about a second, third one. So, any input we can get back, once it's done, uh, from not just all the merchants, people that attended it. So, I think we should do a study of how it went.
Hundred percent agree. And I think this is a perfect example of why we need to be all in the same room, and not staring at each other through computers. and not staring at each other through computer screens. It's a difficult thing to try to explain when I'm talking with my hands and you guys can't see them. And we don't have the, we don't have the, you know, the pull down boards for everybody to look at.
Right.
And I don't, it's just more difficult and I, but I agree with Jim. I think cause right now we're running into a bunch of questions at the last minute and we don't have another meeting before this event is scheduled to help her out. You know what I mean? So it's just a perfect example of why we all need to be sitting in the same room and why people need to have access to us. Which they haven't for months.
The rule on the restaurant just changed today, didn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I, I didn't even think about it when I was looking at it, but that would really screw Mike Larkin.
So they think they can, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're excited about reopening and they need it just as much as everybody else does, and I downtown businesses are not chain restaurants and box stores that can survive three months at a time. Target's gonna be fine. Meyer's gonna be fine. Burger King will probably be fine. We need to get people downtown. And stuff like this is what we need to keep doing. And I think if Tony is in there working with Mike and Chief, he can dunk this. Perry? You know, you put wheels on your chair, you wouldn't even have to stand up. You could just slide right over. Perry?
Well, so I under, yeah, the traffic, um, I mean, we can't protect everybody, everything. But again, I was just, you know, so if you started basically where, where the trash containers are along our, and if you just roped off the one side where the parking is, and actually go all the way around Light and Power's building to um the other side, also utilize the, where the shed or where the was, basically where, back of where Marty used. I mean, you just wrap it and then not traffic and then just move traffic a little bit closer to river. Um, and I, I think it would work.
Yeah, I agree. Thanks Perry. I also think if people are parking, sorry, go ahead Marty.
If, I was talking on Riverside, just block it right off, right at the dumpsters, right to the end of Light and Power.
Talking about all the way from the dumpsters to the payment drop box, that, see where my hands are now, that whole section?
Yeah.
And I think if people are parking, that, if the businesses and Larkins are open, people are gonna park away and walk down there. And I think that's even better, because they're gonna walk by eight or 10 other stores on the way to get there. So, I mean, I think if the consensus, what I'm hearing at least, and correct me if I'm wrong, is as long as she's with Mike and Bucala and they come up with a plan, we're gonna be pretty agreeable to this event going down. Perry?
Yep.
My biggest challenge, I was just gonna say, my biggest challenge is gonna be making sure we have better signage. There was some concern from my dealers that people still didn't see, you know, so I may need to get more signs and, you know, I know what the sign law is, so I've just gotta make sure I can get some more signage to show people that we're down there.
We're addressing increased signage shortly.
Right. And Mike Greg's got his hand up.
And first, we going to use the parking spaces in the business lot, even though there's been an objection from the Bartkisses? Or are we not gonna use that area?
No, no. I think it was, we're not gonna use that back parking.
Yeah, I don't think we were gonna use it.
River, River, right there where the old line shack building used to be, is up for sale. Use that. That gives you a lot of green space out there in the grass, you know, um, visibility definitely.
And the people are right on the river, so they can do that.
I was, I thought Greg was gonna volunteer to make a sign.
He's got that eight foot lawn. I've seen it.
There's a couple of signs that Greg's got around town over the years. You gotta wait till April first usually to get a real good Greg Canfield sign.
Mike Liz has.
Yep.
Sorry to keep um bugging you, but isn't that green space between, um, I guess you call it the line shack building, the white building, and um backwater, isn't there a green space there that's owned by Lowell Light and Power as well?
Little tiny piece. Jeff owns the.
Yeah, Jeff owns the north part of the square. Yep.
So he might be approachable to put booths there, so it'd be on the green space and not on the road, which would be a good idea too.
I know Jeff's got some stuff over there. I was just walking the river the other day. He's got a fire pit back there. I think a picnic table where his employees sit outside on their breaks, but.
They'll have a fire.
Yeah.
Maybe he would be willing to have some food also.
He's always approachable about community events, just like, you know, the rest of the downtown people are, so. I think you can have Riverside from the dumpsters north, as long as you get Mike and Bucala on board to help make it as safe as possible. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, addressing said sign concerns, let's move on to resolution fourteen twenty, sign board moratorium, Mike.
Yes, uh, at the last city council meeting, city administration was asked to look into allowing a second sandwich board sign for businesses in the downtown district. After the meeting, Jessica Wood and I looked at the ordinance regarding this and since the sandwich board requirements are only in the central business district downtown, this will be much easier to implement than a moratorium throughout the entire city. Since there is a specific emergency reason why to institute a moratorium, we can articulate the COVID-19 pandemic as a reason to implement. Attached is resolution fourteen dash twenty, which would provide a hundred and twenty day moratorium of section twenty point oh six A point one four of the city of Lowell zoning ordinance that would allow no more than two sandwich boards per business or establishment in C two district, business district. This moratorium would run until Oc- October eighth, twenty twenty. I recommend the Lowell City Council approve resolution fourteen dash twenty, which would provide a hundred and twenty day moratorium to section twenty point oh six A point one four of the city of Lowell zoning ordinance.
Let's get to everything we asked for. We asked for downtown. We asked to get through the summer. Uh, I like it a lot. I'll look for that recommendation for resolution fourteen twenty.
So moved.
Marty, you wanna support?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions for Mike? Liz, are you laughing at us? Sue?
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yeah.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Alright, we'll move on to what I'm sure will be the most exciting issue on the agenda. Healthcare savings and retirement resolutions fifteen and sixteen dash twenty, Mike.
Yep. In February, the city council approved the Lowell Police Officers Association labor agreement and implemented a retirement healthcare savings plan for non-union and department director employees. If you recall, we created plans for those employees not eligible to retire by June thirty, twenty twenty five. In addition, we agreed not to provide retirement and healthcare provisions for any non-union or department director employee hired after September sixth, twenty sixteen, and for any new police hires after July one, twenty twenty. I've worked with the Michigan Municipal Employment Retirement System, MERS, to establish individual plans for employees who would be eligible for this healthcare savings plan. Currently, five employees of the city would be eligible at this time. We're ready to implement these plans on July one, twenty twenty. However, we need to approve these resolutions for MERS to administer. Attached to resolutions fifteen dash twenty and sixteen dash twenty, which institute plans specifically for the police officer union and the non-union and department director employees. I recommend the Lowell City Council approve resolutions fifteen dash twenty, sixteen dash twenty as presented.
Alright, let's look, uh, motion for, anybody have any questions for Mike? I'm sorry. Sounds like this is also, I like when it's exactly what we talked about coming back. Uh, resolution fifteen dash twenty, motion for the police officers.
I'll make that motion to pass fifteen dash twenty.
Marty, support?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on just fifteen dash twenty? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
And Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Resolution sixteen twenty, non-union employees.
I make a motion to pass that one.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yeah.
Greg, any board and commission reports?
No.
Cliff?
Yes, I attended the chamber Zoom meeting. Uh, probably all of this is old news, but the farmer's market's gonna be at the Impact Church Lot starting June eighteenth. Uh, Mrs. Baker was looking for help doing some surveys. I stupidly volunteered. Um, we did a survey about attending the concerts, which is the first one we completed. A lot of people filled it out. Um, the net result is the concerts have been canceled due to uh the situation and that was agreed upon by the chamber board and the Lowell Arts Board. Um, there's, think they're working on a cruise through Lowell with cars and motorcycles potentially on June twentieth. And I'm seeing Liz isn't shaking her head, so I think I got all that right.
Thank you. Marty, any board of commission?
No, I had no.
No, I have nothing.
Me neither. Uh, Mike, city managers support?
Yeah, a couple of items. Uh, first one is, is uh, I wanna thank all the agencies that helped out with the fire on um Wednesday, on Tuesday, um, last Tuesday. Um, just to kind of, not to get into too much detail, um, but um, been working with Steve Dockerslute on this. And um, from what I under, from what we understand, we believe that there was a defect in the transformer identical to the one that happened um in twenty sixteen um before I came here. Um, that being said, we are working with the insurance company. We're doing two things with the insurance. The first one is, is we're gonna file a claim with our insurance carrier on this matter. However, what, the other thing that we are doing is we are also going to be seeking damages um from uh Solomon, which is the transformer care um provider, but the biggest issue we have is we don't want to, we don't wanna wait six months fighting the kit, the uh manufacturer, when we have uh boats that were damaged and a home that was damaged. So we're trying to, and also we need to clean up the site. So um, we're working in conjunction on both of these. So hopefully the way, hopefully if it works out, we could possibly seek um reimbursement of our insurance claim from Solomon is what we're kind of going with this. So like I said, I don't wanna get too specific at this point, but that's, that's what Steve and I have been working on um with uh, with Jessica and with our insurance company. Um, the, we are beginning construction next Monday, June eighth uh for the um, for the paving of uh Elizabeth Suffolk and um Howard Streets. And um also uh, probably after Riverwalk, uh, we'll be doing Riverside Drive basically in the area we talked about. Um, we will be having a uh Zoom meeting, a general, an informational meeting for the residents impacted by that on Wednesday at seven PM. Um, we've sent notices to all the residents impacted by the construction and uh they have information for the meeting. Uh, last week, I uh, Liz and I worked together um on a um, on a grant application. The Michigan Economic Development Corporation um basically had a uh, had a program called Match on Main. And they would provide up to fifty thousand dollars for whether it's a DDA, a city, an economic development uh corporation to uh assist their storefront, their downtown businesses basically. And so what we did was we reached out to all the businesses that were, that were able to apply, but the only thing was with fifty thousand dollars, the, the minimum we could provide in a grant to assist the businesses was two thousand dollars. So what we did was we took, we basically said we would take the first twenty-five applications. We had um seventeen, we had seventeen uh applications and we submitted those off to the state and we'll wait and see what happens with that. Uh, last week, I sent all the uh restaurants in the downtown an application to utilize the uh public space um for uh their restaurant operations. Um, just in talking with them, I don't, not, I don't know if all of them are gonna do it, but I do anticipate a couple of them and I'm waiting back for their resumes. Today, we also opened the uh general contractor bids for the showboat and the line shack RFP. Uh, we got three bids for the showboat. Um, and I, it, it came in um, a little bit less than what I had anticipated, which is good. So we still have to review those um and between myself and our, and our consulting engineers um to go through those. Um, we did receive one bid for the line shack and I think the best way to do, to deal with that is take that back to Light and Power since it is their building and seek a recommendation from them and what they would like to do with it. Um, that is all I have.
Alright, thanks Mike. Um, I, yep, sorry, go ahead.
I had one question for my report, and maybe Perry knows it. Over in Lowell Light and Power, how many more of those transformers are we utilizing out in the field or are those the only two? And do we expect that they could be bad in the next year or two?
Excellent question.
Yeah.
That would probably, or Ryan would really have to uh talk about that. Um, I'm sure we have other Solomon um transformers, but uh, the one that fire up there, we basically have um Light and Power has admitted to have backup for everything that we have field, except for those that um companies, industrial companies that own transformer. So my guess is we probably do have some of those. Um, we routinely check. Now, there's oil in those transformers that really catches fire, but the one um that we had um before by Monroe, that caught fire, that was determined that it was a bad bushing. Yet, I haven't had the conversation with Steve to know what, as, I know we had insurance people and will come out and take a look at that, so I don't know what the results of that are. And Steve probably, Ryan could probably give us of how many other uh Solomon um transformers that we have in, in our fleet, in our uh package.
Yeah, I figured you guys had a handle on that. Just threw the question out there. Thank you Perry.
Really good question, Jim. Anybody else have any questions for Mike? Alright, uh, let's hold off on appointments till we can meet in person. Council comments, Marty?
Uh, I have none. Tanya?
Oh, sorry, Marty.
I did, uh, I hope the event right there will be a huge success. I hope it draws lots of people. And I hope it goes well so we can uh do this again.
Thank you. I think uh, I think it's got a lot of potential. I know that the customers that came were very excited and actually asked us to do more. So I think it's, as bad as everything is, I think it's, there's always an opportunity that comes out of something bad, so if we can flip this on its head a little bit and um, my goal is gonna be to reach out to some of the artisans that have lost locations to go to and see if we can't get participation. We, we had Frank Leisure from Tucker Town. So if we do more of that kind of thing, um, that was very helpful. And I know he's been hurting financially.
Yeah. Well, thanks. Cliff?
Was that Cliff?
Yes.
Um, I was really impressed with the speed with which the aforementioned fire was dealt with by the fire departments. And I got kinda worried when I saw Ada go flying by my store and uh, I And I was, it's, it's a bummer that one of the Light and Power guys got some cracked ribs. I was sorry to hear that, but those guys sure handled that quick.
Thank you.
Kudos to them.
Greg?
Nothing, thanks.
Jim?
Well, I just wanna take a moment to say how, with everything, how bad things are in the United States with the riots and everything that's happened around, around the nation, that I feel pretty good that we have to deal with parking lot closures and resolutions for sandwich boards versus what other cities and municipalities had to go through. So my hearts go out to everybody that's, that's dealing with those situations in those major cities. So that's what I have, Mike.
Thanks, Jim. I have, I was reached out to by a resident volunteering cleanup and disposal of the kayaks and the racks and everything affected by that fire over there. And I'll be helping them with that. I just gotta get with Steve and Mike and figure out a time and a way to go about doing it safely. So if anybody's interested in helping us out with that, I'm pretty easy to get ahold of. Liz Baker, 24 hours a day through this whole thing, trying to help everybody as best she can, often really goes unappreciated. I think that bears saying as many times as you can say it, because I know there's 97 things going on down there, and we're trying to salvage what we can and keep every piece of what makes us what we are. And I know that's no easy task, so I appreciate it. And I'm sure everybody else around here appreciates it, even if they sometimes forget to say it. I worked downtown this weekend and I was very defeated on Saturday. And then on Sunday, when I went back, there's thousands of people and thousands of businesses and thousands of smiles cleaning it up, trying to get it back. Businesses donating food, supplies. And I'm watching through there and I'm trying to make some sense of it. And I see a lot of faces that I recognize from here, which I think is pretty awesome, and I don't, I don't wanna talk about it anymore. Jim?
With that, I'm motion to adjourn at 8:11.
I have a question. I have a matter I'd like to discuss.
I don't have it.
Dan?
No. It says Amy's iPad.
Yeah, I have a matter I'd like to discuss.
Who?
My name's Robert Marsman, I live at 345 Downey Drive. I have an issue with rainwater flooding my property from the Laurel's of Kent. Just not having any luck getting anywhere resolving this. And they're claiming to me that the city won't let them tie in any storm drains to help fix the problem. And I'm just trying to figure out what can be done, because I'm getting like 30,000 gallons of water dumped on my property every time it rains, forcing my basement to flood. I've got pumps in my yard to pump water out. I just don't know what to do anymore. Ever since they redid their parking lot last year, this has been a huge problem.
Mike?
I'm gonna turn it over to Dan, because I know Dan's been working on this. Go ahead, Dan.
Well, as far as them not being allowed to hook up to the city system, that's not true. I have not talked to anybody from Laurel's of Kent about hooking up to the storm sewer. I talked to one contractor investigating it for them, but he never called me back. There's the county drain, the creek to the north of Laurel's of Kent. Down at Heffron, there's storm sewer available. Not sure the capacity of it, but it would be up to the Laurel's of Kent to get the water there themselves. The city doesn't provide that for them. The storm sewers we put in along the streets are for our streets and for the water that gets there. But we can, it can be extended, possibly. They need to take a look at that and make sure the capacity's there, but they should extend that up to their own property. Or again, they could put something in to put the water out to the county drain that's on the north side of their property.
And I guess I'm just, I'm just asking the question because that's what I'm being told by the Laurel's of Kent. And I'm just trying to get to the bottom, you know, and if there's any help that we can get from you or, you know.
And we're, and we're trying, we're reaching out to them to offer them our input. They're not reciprocating the communication. I did see the news story where Laurel's of Kent tried to blame the city. We're 100% willing to help and we're willing to answer any questions they have, but they have to initiate the conversation. We've, we've reached out to them, we're trying to help resolve this, but it is a it is on them, and they need to.
So is there, is there anything I can do as, as a homeowner? Obviously, I've been trying to work with them. I've been trying to do anything I can. I've been trying to work with anybody that's willing to work, but I can't get anywhere. You know? And I, I, I don't know all the laws of it, but I do know that ever since they changed the pitch of their parking lot and this is all running into my property, and I also know that that's not okay.
No, I agree 100%. And I know a lot of your neighbors have the same problem, and I know that we feel for them. Is there, Steve, is there anything on an enforcement end that he can do as far as a complaint or?
I, I sent the ordinance that I thought it dealt with to the city attorney, and they felt that it didn't apply. Mike, can you add any more to that? Yeah, I talked to the city attorney about that. That was more geared towards connected storm and sanitary sewers, those ordinances you were referring to. Yeah, this unfortunately, this is really a civil matter between Laurel's of Kent and the homeowners. This is really that, that's really what it bottoms down to. They can't do what they're doing. They, the, the work they did at their property, from my understanding, did not require any type of building permits or anything from the city. So it was basically deemed as maintenance. Had they milled the property down, had they milled the parking lot and repaved it, well then we would have been able to implement, they would have had to have submitted a new building permit. But what they did basically was just put asphalt over the asphalt, didn't require that.
Even though they changed the slope, changed the pitch of that part?
To my knowledge, yes.
Hey, can we build a curb in our yard?
So I, I guess I'm just stuck to do whatever I need to do. So if I have to bring in 30 yards of dirt and build a wall in the back of my yard to try to help stop it, which I know it's not going to do, because it's just gonna seep through there, because I was told before by someone that I couldn't do that, because then I'd be flooding their property out. And I don't know why it's okay for me, but.
Nobody here, nobody, nobody at the city level is saying that it's okay. Nobody has said that. We're saying they need to rectify it with you. There's nothing we can do except offer them help and advice to force them to make it right with you.
Okay, I was asking that if, if they're telling me that the city's refusing to let them hook to the sewer, does it cause some kind of an issue where you could step, maybe give us a hand?
Dan?
I mean, obviously, I have no
Right.
No record, nothing to force them to do anything.
We could, I suppose the city could send them a letter saying we were being told that they're telling people they're not allowed to hook up, and that's not true. We could, we could send them a letter to that extent. But again, I don't know that we can force them as the city to hook up. That'd be a
And I understand that.
We could send a letter.
I, I, I guess I feel like, you know, everybody's going, well, it's, it's just not our problem. And I understand that that may be, but I also, I pay a lot of taxes too, so, you know. Everybody's admitting that it's wrong, that they shouldn't do that, but I feel like nobody wants to, you know, give us a hand.
So I could send them a letter if that, that would let them know that it's available at Heffron if they can make it work. But
I guess
gonna make them do it, but we'll put that together.
Dan?
Yes.
Could you copy the letter to the gentleman that's expressing the concerns? That way Laurel's of Kent knows that he knows that we're saying, hey, we're denying you.
Let me meet with the city manager tomorrow. We'll come up, we'll formulate a plan and make sure we send it out properly from the right people to the right people, so that we only have to do it once.
Okay. If there are more than one homeowner affected?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's more than one.
Yeah.
I would, maybe however many of you there are, you might go together and contact an attorney to write them a letter, because that might make them move.
Yeah, we're, we're in the works of that already.
Well, and wait till you get the letter. If they're, if they're saying, hey, the, the city of Lowell isn't cooperating, once you have that letter from Dan in your hands, they can't use that Dodge.
I do have to express how disappointing that is to me, that a local business that we've been supportive of and has always shown support back would come and say that the city's fault. You pay taxes to them, go to them. It's, it's just frustrating that. And I understand it's easy, because you're blaming the government, that's easy. We've all done it, we've all done it. It's just disappointing to see a prominent local business do that, especially on the news without any footing to back it up. So, all right. Anything else on that before I entertain Jim's motion? Jim, would you like to amend your motion to 8:21 PM?
But I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll support.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Roll call motion is a Zoom. Sue?
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Awesome.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes, we're adjourned.
Thanks.
All right, night, everyone.